Good evening. It is 7:03 PM on Tuesday, July 26th. I will call this regular meeting of the Dickinson City Council to order. Item one, call to order and certification of quorum.
Councilmember Simpson.
Present.
Councilwoman Simpson.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson. Mayor Skipworth.
Here.
Councilmember Brantley.
Here.
Councilmember Decker.
Here.
Councilmember Linton.
Thank you. We want to item to the invocation. Pastor Simpson, could you lead us in the prayer, please?
Let us pray. Oh Lord our God, how excellent is your name in all the earth, from the rising of the sun to the going down of the same. Your name is great and greatly to be praised. We thank you for this opportunity to gather and conduct this business. We ask your blessing upon the citizens, upon the staff, the elected officials, our armed service, the city, this county, this state, and this great nation. Keep us all under your protecting care. In your name we pray. Amen.
You join me in the pledges of allegiance. First, the United States flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now for the Texas pledge. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. Moving on to item four, proclamations and awards, of which we have none this evening. So that'll take us to item five, announcements and presentations. Announcements concerning items of community interest. No action will be taken or discussed. Councilmember comments regarding items of community interest in accordance with Texas Government Code, section 551.0415. Item 5A, council comments. We will start this evening with Councilman Linton.
Thank you all for coming. I attended the IT meeting, information technology multi-project presentation with Renee Valdez and Councilman Simpson. And we evaluated the infrastructure of the city, including, and the IT department covers multiple areas. I won't go into all of them, but it's quite a lot. It's not just the network, individual systems, it's also the cell phones, building security, and so forth. It also has a police department to deal with. So this is my area of expertise. This is what I do for a living. And it was quite an eye-opener. I know that Mr. Councilman, I'm sorry, Mr. Councilman, Mr. Simpson, Councilman Simpson, we discussed it a little bit after the meeting, but it was a good meeting. It was a good start. And talked with a couple of the subject matter experts and we're moving forward on that. And I look forward to hearing more from Mr. Valdez. After that, I attended the red, white, and bayou brainstorm and today, the initial committee meetings. It's good that we're getting the festival back here in town, getting a live music festival. We're also gonna have some cooking, a cook-off as well. And that is in the beginning stages and I'm doing what I can to help out Juree with communications on the entertainment side. Also, I received two citizen complaints related to streets and drainage. Spoke with the city manager, assistant city manager. Both issues are being addressed with re-leveling and cleaning of culverts. Also informed the citizens the reporting mechanisms available on the city website. Thanks to Theo and Chase for a very quick response within 24 hours. And I haven't called the citizens yet, but I'm sure that they're happy. But I'll check up later this week. Next thing, I spoke with Ed Boakes with Bayou Animal Services. Had a couple of questions about the budget and he responded to me and we're gonna be discussing that at the next BAS board meeting. Also attended the MI Lewis event this past Saturday. Spoke with many people from around the community. And also was able, lucky enough to able to sit in on a couple of songs with Pee-wee Bowen and Henbert Wills. On Monday, I informed WCID of a water leak in my, in my neighborhood. The leak has been there for a while and I finally got in touch with somebody and they're supposed to give me a call back tomorrow. Also attended, I'm gonna be attending the Chamber of Commerce luncheon this Thursday at 11:30. On Friday, I'm going to be performing at Moray from 7:00 to 10:00. So if you wanna come out and watch your fellow councilman make a fool of himself on stage in front of a large group of people, excluding tonight, of course, come on out. And then reminder to everybody that Tuesday is National Night Out and I'll be attending the event at several neighborhoods around town. That's all I had.
All right, thank you. Councilman Decker.
Glad to see everyone here tonight. I wanna thank our city manager, Theo. When I mentioned about the trees growing up in Magnolia, I think within two or three days, they had, they were digging it up, making it nice. And for the people that don't know, this town has five tributaries. And you plug them, you plug one up and it's gonna do damage. And that's the thing that I brought up. I think I took care of it. Is there somebody with the city that looks into these tributaries?
Yeah, so most of the time what we do with our tributaries is, is we have our public workstations that are gonna be monitoring that and we're gonna be adding it to our maintenance schedule. So we've been slowly incorporating that. We have not historically handled our tributaries. But, so we're doing a lot of preventive maintenance. So you saw a lot of that in Borden's Gully. So we're just gonna be continuing to add to our preventive maintenance schedule.
Well, I appreciate how quick you did it. It was rather like the next day. But that's what it'll take because we get the water in these five from somewhere else. But we have to keep the city clean. Thank you all.
Right, thank you. Councilman Brantley.
Wanna welcome everybody that's here tonight. Thanks to anybody that's attending online. Appreciate your attendance. Just have a couple of things. Last week, I had the benefit of attending with Councilman Simpson, the newly-elected officials orientation in Allen, Texas. It was very informative. I was proud to attend that. I think I took away quite a bit of knowledge that I'll be able to apply to the position. Councilman Linton mentioned the Chamber of Commerce luncheon next Thursday. I would, I would encourage everyone to attend that. The presenter will be Dickinson Girls Softball, which holds a soft place in my heart. So please plan on coming out next Thursday to the Chamber of Commerce luncheon and hearing all about Dickinson Girls Softball and how we can continue to support them. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody that's here. On Saturday night, along with several other council members, I attended MI Lewis banquet and fundraiser and was treated to music by Musical Arts of our council member Fred Linton. Actually, he was up there and he fit right in. I mean, had his own horn and, I mean, you'd act like he'd done this before. So if you really don't have anything to do on Friday night, you know, you might wanna go out there and actually see what a talented person he is, you know? I was impressed and I think the rest of my council members were. And just so, just in case anybody's curious, we set at different tables, so there was no violation of a quorum either.
Everybody, appreciate knowing that. Councilwoman Simpson.
Thank you everyone for attending and giving us your time. We greatly appreciate you being here. School starts for Dickinson ISD on August 17th for transition grades and then all students begin on August 18th. Please be aware of school zones reactivating in your neighborhood. Registration for students begins next week. I was pleased to also attend the Texas Municipal League Newly-Elected Officials Continuing Education Training in Allen, Texas with Mr. Brantley. I'm excited to continue to learn more about my role as a council member and how I can be of best service to my community. I was also able to attend the MI Lewis Gala with most of my councilmates over the weekend. It was a wonderful event to raise funds to continue to serve over 9,000 individuals in the Dickinson ISD community who receive benefits. MI Lewis is always looking for volunteers to give their time, to give your time to help others. You can visit their website for more information. A couple of other events I attended recently are the Galveston County Mayors and Council Members Association meeting, where I met with leaders from other surrounding communities. Also attended the League City Chambers Luncheon on behalf of Dickinson ISD regarding the state of school safety. The gum bayou widening project is happening directly behind my house, so every day I have been walking the project with my dogs. It's very clean, it's very organized, and it's going very smoothly. So thank you to the county and DISD for assisting coordination to this project to ultimately alleviate flooding concerns. August is Live Music Month at the Chamber of Commerce Market on the bayou, happening Saturday, August 6th from 9:00 to 1:00. You can check out their vendor lists and more information on Facebook. Finally, I wanna thank artist Gabriel Prusmak, the Dickinson Chamber, the Galveston County Community Coalition, etc., and Texas Health and Human Services Commission for the coordination and installation of our very first community mural located on the building across from the Dickinson Post Office off Termini. The mural represents community with the bold words, "Love big, and so we shall." Thank you.
And Councilman Simpson.
Thank you, Mayor, council, city staff, citizens, welcome to this meeting. I also, since we last met, attended the council of mayor and councilmember meeting. Also, the information technology meeting with Councilmember Linton and our IT director Renee Valdez. Attended the Houston-Galveston Area Council meeting, the third Tuesday of this month. And the MI Lewis Gala. I'm partial to them. I happen to serve on the board. They are looking for volunteers, they're looking for food, and they're also looking for money. All of that to help organization that helps people not only with food, but eviction assistance, utility assistance. Many, many people are one bad week away from needing that assistance. So if there's any way that you can possibly help, please do so. Also want to acknowledge that at Faith United Methodist Church in Dickinson, Texas, that on Monday through Friday, we are conducting the Kids Cafe program for the Houston Food Bank and the Kids Pack program. If you come between 9:00 and 10:00, or 12:00 and 1:00, you will be treated to a free breakfast or lunch. And then the Kids Pack will allow you to take home a pack that has two breakfasts, two lunches, and two snacks. It's supposed to be for the kids, but we'll figure out something for the adults if they need help as well during that time. And that program's usually going on most, most days and will go until August 12th. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. And I'd like to welcome everybody as well. Thanks to everybody that checked on my wife and myself as we were convalescing with COVID. Where we're doing a lot better now. She's actually in the, in the back tonight as well. So we've, we're kinda recovering, but man, that thing, it sticks with you a little bit. You get real winded and stuff afterwards, so still kinda fighting it. So my apologies if I have a little coughing issue this evening. But good to be back and thanks again to everybody that checked on us. Also attended MI Lewis. It was a really great event. Good to see people out there. A great organization and they're doing a lot of things, working with the city, maybe on some things even more closely than people know. And I think there may be some, some more news on that in the future. But they're doing some great stuff out there and we are really truly blessed to have them here in our community. Also would like to kinda point out, he reminded me today. He pointed out that on Thursday, it will be the one-year anniversary of our city manager, starting with the city. And so I'd, you know, I'd like to take a moment and thank him for being here. I think that a lot of the, a lot of the progress that we've had people come up here and talk about at these meetings, which I'll tell you, there's a couple of us that are some veterans to counsel up here. It was very, it has been very rare to have people get up and actually make positive comments about work being done in the city. And we've seen that happen a lot more in the last year. And I know that he is directly responsible for that. But also a lot of the projects that we've been hearing about with the Project Genesis, other things like that, a lot of those, him and Coraland as well. But that has a lot to do with their, with their leadership that they've done. So again, it's well-deserved applause there. So thanks, everybody, for that. And I would be remiss. I see her out here. It is Ms. Sue Emmett's birthday today. Say that in. Yes, she is at a city council meeting on her birthday. Just think about that for just a minute. Anyway, but anyway, good, happy birthday. Glad you're here. I think that is really all that I have and we've got several presentations, so I will, I will move us on. With the HGA C update, Councilman Simpson, do you have anything for that?
Yeah, just, just a few things. I forgot to mention about the MI Lewis thing. Wanna track, backtrack. Fred is really good. I know he, he likes to play up here and act like he's making a fool of himself. But as someone who has had to mix and do a lot of live shows for a living before becoming a pastor, I will say he's a really good saxophone player. And if you haven't heard him, you should, you should check him out. Also want to piggyback on the comments about Theo. I snuck into the planning, comprehensive planning meeting and he had high praise from somebody in that meeting while they were talking about it. One of the citizens said, and I quote, "Theo's gotten more done in the last six to eight months than we've seen in six to eight years." So I do wanna say that as well. Been a good job going. As far as the, the HGA, HGA C, I did attend the meeting at 3555 Timmons Lane on the third Tuesday of this month. From that, the packet is in, the HGA C packet is in the council packet, if anyone wants to look at the specifics. But the public comment period either has come to an end or is coming to an end pretty soon for the allotment of the $1.3 billion worth of Harvey money. We did vote to approve last meeting the $15,761,000 for City of Dickinson. And that's been turned in. And so now we just have to work through the process of getting that approved and then starting to turn some dirt on those projects. Also, an item of note, August 4th, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, there will be a regional information cybersecurity workshop going on with the Houston-Galveston Area Council and a lot of council members and cybersecurity. It's something that's overlooked and if you overlook it, you can shut a city down. So I think that's something of note. I would hate for something like that to not be recognized. But we, because we've had that meeting about upgrading our IT infrastructure, somebody clicks the wrong link and the whole city is, is kaput. And so I just wanna note that as well. It's both in-person and virtual on August 4th, 9:00 AM to 11:00. And I think I'm gonna swing by that meeting as well. But that's all I have for HGA C unless anybody had some questions.
I had one thing, I wanted to, I'm sorry. I had one thing, parliamentary procedure. I had one thing I wanted to mention. I wore my Hawaiian shirt tonight out of respect for Councilman Wilson. I had told him since I started this that I was gonna wear a Hawaiian shirt. I did it tonight. Just wanted to say I'm a man of my word.
Thanks for that. Okay. Item 5B, the city manager update. Turned over to our city manager, Theo Malanson.
So, thank you. We have a few recognitions I'd like to, to handle this evening. One of them, I wanted to highlight that our HR Director, Carrie Lynn Baskel is, has her professional and human resources certification. So I just wanted to highlight that. Congratulations to her. She's all growed up now. Also, if I could have, Ed, would you be gracious enough to come on up? I think you have a couple of recognitions. Are they both here this time? All right, outstanding. Why don't you have them come on up here? Why don't y'all come up, Marcus, Tom? Come on up, guys.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you so much for taking the opportunity to recognize the two lone animal control officers of the City of Dickinson, Santa Fe, and Clear Lake Shores. Animal control officers perform a wide range of services for our communities. They work long hours, in dangerous situations, in inclement weather, and oftentimes with few resources and equipment. Depending on the situation, they are called upon to be law enforcement officers, social workers, animal experts, emergency responders, conflict mitigators, and much more. They work closely with the justice system, including prosecutors and judges. They work with local and state law enforcement agencies, elected and appointed officials, and public health officials, the fire department, code enforcement, and social service agencies. They are the human animal professionals for our entire community. The complexity and challenges of their job and the skills they need to perform that job are all too often not appreciated, which is why we are here this evening. And I wanna thank you for taking the time to recognize and appreciate and congratulate them on being certified by the State of Texas to be certified animal control officers.
Well, and I wanna, I wanna add something too, real quick.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
I wanna add something too, real quick. Go ahead, finish what you've got.
In addition to that, Marcus just was recognized by the National Animal Control Association as a certified officer and Tom is gonna be in the next couple of weeks.
So one of these gentlemen is not a stranger to our house. I see you up here. I wanna give you a little personal anecdote about the kinda things they deal with. So several Saturdays ago, I was sleeping in on a weekend and my phone started ringing and it was my wife calling me from within her own house, saying that there was a bat flying throughout the home. So I was able to get with staff to get the number for the animal control officer. And this is not just because I'm the mayor. They, this is a service that is provided. And he dutifully came out and really looked for that little stinker and the worst thing that happened to a bat in the house is not finding where it went. But that is what happened. We were pretty sure it got back out, however it came in. But, but yeah, that's, that's the kinda thing that they deal with, looking around very judiciously for bats and whatever else goes on. So I can kinda personally attest that they, they do a great job out here, so.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor and City Manager, would it be possible for you to come around, take a picture, to memorialize this, this moment? Thank you. Juree, do you have your camera?
I would like to stand as far away from the podium as possible. Nina, get in there. Stop! Give me your phone!
Bring your dog to the mat, pet of the month there.
All right. On three. One, two, three. One more, y'all. I know I'm gonna be extra. One, two, three. And then let me take one and return. One, two, three. Perfect.
Ladies and gentlemen, what has become the most popular segment of the, of the city manager update each month. Nina, would you be gracious enough to let us know about our pet of the month? Oh, yep.
So we found her. She had been dumped on Highway 517. And luckily, a citizen found her and let her in. So she's about six months old. She has the EBITDA exchange, which is a change that's not contagious to people or to other pets that comes from her mother's muscle. This is her in the healing stage. It took well over a month to get her to where we can start building. And then this is her. She likes to throw ice up. She likes to ride in a car. I'm actually fostering her myself. I couldn't leave her at the shelter. So she's getting along with my cat. And she is 100% available for adoption. She's ready to go to memory, not her stage, she's vaccinated, she's a microchip. And she's wonderful. And I've posted her online several times. So if you guys could share, stick it there.
Thank you so much. What a transformation. That's great. That's great. So continuing on, we do have quite a long city manager update, which is a good thing. Kind of an update on many of the things that you guys approved for us to work on. And one of the first things you guys, we worked on, especially in our redevelopment of key strategic areas of the city, was to begin the process of creating two tax increment reinvestment zones. Council tonight, who I have with us this evening is a guru of TURS. He didn't even pay me to say that. Travis James is with TXP. He, he has worked on many TURS across the state. I'm sure he'll kinda introduce himself. And one of the big things you're gonna see tonight is really kinda the homework he has done, kinda the baseline work that has to be done for us to begin the process of creating the TURS. And then he'll go into the next steps from tonight forward. Travis?
Great. Thank you, Theo. Mayor, Council, it's good to be here. I think there's some new faces. I was here four or five months ago giving that TURS 101 presentation with the EDC board. So now I'm here to give an update and talk about next steps. It's always tough following bat stories and dogs and all kinds of things. So I'll try to be somewhat as exciting as The Economist up here. Just to remind everybody, and for those of you who are new, tax increment reinvestment zones are geographic areas where you all decide to contribute a portion or all of future tax revenue for a certain period of time, for 20 or 25 years. At the end of that 20 or 25 years, the TURS goes away and all the money flows back to the general fund like normal. So that's the short version of a TURS. I can answer questions now. If, if anybody wants to talk about the specifics of a TURS, I call these the two key rules. There are more. The first is you can't have more than 30% of the property in the zone at the time of creation being used for residential. You can either use acres or value to make that determination. And the second is you can't have too many TURS. So the first is you can't have too much residential at the time of creation. The second says you can only have so many TURS based on how big of a city you are. So both of the TURS we talked about last time do comply with these two rules. These are the seven about last time do comply with these two rules. These are the seven steps to creating a TERS. We are still in step one. We're gonna get through all of these by the end of the year, if you all agree, and I'll give you a timeline at the end about how we can do that. As a reminder, the key thing we need to do is create the TERS, get through step number four by the end of the year, so we lock in the 2022 base year. So as a refresher to folks at home and to everyone here, 2022 would be the base. 2023 is the first year of growth. Those taxes won't be due until January thirty-first of '24. So it does take time for this zone to generate revenue, so it's important we get it created this year. Okay, so these are the seven steps. We can talk about these in more detail. This says for the downtown TERS, but the numbers I'm gonna show you, I did this for both the TERS. I assumed a twenty-five-year lifespan. That's kind of the standard. If you all want to use twenty, we can do twenty. I assume the city and the county participate. We can talk to the college district about them participating in this. I held your 2022 tax rates constant. As your tax rate goes up and down, that also impacts how you do that TERS, uh, calculation. So if the rate goes up, if the rate goes down, it applies to the TERS. I assumed a two-and-a-half percent appreciation. I think you all know that the, the two or three projects in each of the zones, I use those to factor in future growth. I know I covered a lot, but it'll make more sense. We're calling this the I-45 TERS. This is the boundary we talked about last time. No changes have been made to it. So this is what's being proposed based on the work I've done, talking to the folks working on your comp plan, talking to EDC and city staff. This is the proposed boundaries. We can still make tweaks. These are always hard to read, but these are your land use codes. So A1 is gonna be your single family. B is gonna be your multi-family. C and E are gonna be vacant properties. F1 is gonna be commercial. And then I went in and identified your public sector properties and your religious properties. When you do that calculation, I told you, you can't have more than thirty percent at the time be used for residential. You gotta back out the public sector. So does this map make sense to everybody? You know where we are in the city. So this is the proposed. This one works. It's a lot of, a lot of commercial. These are your 2022 preliminary values. People are still protesting your values, so this is close to what the base value would be. We won't know that until all of these properties get certified. So it's about two-hundred-and-seventy-four parcel acres. That's all the colored. That blue boundary, this bigger boundary, it's larger. It's three-hundred-and-sixty-three acres. So it's two-hundred-and-seventy-four acres when you look at parcels. It's three-hundred-and-sixty-three acres when you take into account the right-of-way. It's about $200 million in taxable value today. So that's what that zone is. So that's, that's the base value. So all the revenue you generate off that $200 million goes back to the general fund like normal. Anything going forward, all or a portion of that would need to be spent in that geographic area. So I took into account some of the projects we've been talking about, the appreciation. I think this zone could generate $40 million or so in incremental tax revenue over the next twenty-five years, just using the county and the city contributing a hundred percent. That may not be appropriate because you have other services to pay for. We can talk about whether fifty percent or seventy-five percent is more appropriate, but this assumes a hundred percent of that future revenue. So one of the challenges we have is to try to strike the balance between you need money to pay for services, but have enough money, go to this zone to pay for infrastructure, to spur the kinds of the development that you all would like to see happen. So $40 million or so over twenty-five years in this zone. The second TERS we've talked about is the downtown TERS, larger boundary. Project Genesis is within this boundary. That's that same slightly challenging map to read. You see there's, um, A is residential, uh, B is gonna be your multi-family, F, you have commercial, public sector properties, religious properties. You all know where this area is. 2022 preliminary values, a hundred-and-twenty parcel acres, a hundred-and-sixty-four total, about $44 million in taxable value. If we take into account Project Genesis and some other things we think would likely happen in this zone, it could generate $37 million in additional or incremental property tax revenue over the next twenty-five years, assuming Dickinson and Galveston, uh, participate. We also, again, go talk to the college districts. As we talked about last time, school districts do not participate in these due to the way the Robin Hood School Finance works out. Most people say they can't. They technically can. They don't because they're not held harmless in Robin Hood, so they don't. So you don't see school districts participating in these. You do see college districts, navigation, navigation districts, and those kinds of things. I know I've covered a lot, and then we can, I can answer any questions you all have. I'm proposing that if, if you all think it makes sense, we need to talk about the duration and the percent, and we can run some numbers, and I'll work with Theo and Cortland on that. Come back to you at some time in September for your first hearing. You then need to have, or for the public hearing and first reading, you then, I think, do two, two readings for things to pass. So we'll do two readings. The TERS gets created. We can talk to other taxing entities about joining in October and November. Have a TERS board meeting sometime in November. You would appoint those members. The other entities that participate would also get to appoint members. I need to create the final project and finance plan. The TERS board approves it. It comes back to you for approval. As we talked about last time, you all would still need to approve all expenditures from the TERS. So the TERS Board's a recommending body. They would work with projects, and they would bring those to you for final approval. So I know I covered a lot. Mayor, I know you have a busy agenda, so I was trying to go quick, so I can answer questions about either TERS and then maybe talk about the timeline.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay. I mean, we'll be learning more moving forward as well through the timeline, so.
Right. So does this timeline work? Come back hopefully sometime in September?
I don't see an issue with it. I mean, the staff, do we have any problem on your end logistically?
No, I think it's a perfect timing. Reason why I do like, uh, September is because, as Travis knows, August is, is our ramp up, and we'll be doing a lot of our budget workshops and our stuff, and so it's really perfect timing because we'll be, you know, we'll be in the approval process of the budget in September, but most of our homework is being done in August, so we'll be good.
All right.
And so, thank you all, and I'll see you back here in September.
Yep. Travis, um, moving on, uh, I did want to take a, uh, a moment. I'm, I was going to, uh, skip ahead, uh, to, uh, to a special guest, and then I'd come back to some of my, you know, general, uh, updates. Uh, we have Ms. Deb Dietz here this evening, and would, uh, and, and I wanted her to give us an update, and she wanted to give you guys an update on our Blue Heron project that the city was gracious enough to, uh, to work alongside, uh, uh, the art guild and so forth, to, uh, to really, uh, make this a big, big project. And I think she has some great things to talk about in, in next phases, so Deb, by all means.
So thank you, um, Deb Dietz. Address? You've got it. Okay. Um, also, I brought up with me Eleanor Brown. She's with the Dickinson, Texas Art Guild also, and also painting two herons. And, uh, we'll talk about some of the other painters. Wanted to update you on our progress, um, talk about where we are financially, and what are the next steps. So, um, I had some slides that I presented at the Historical Foundation, but these are slides that Jere was kind enough to put together for us. So we'll try and get through these rather quickly. So, um, most of you know, this is a great project, the Art Guild, um, which formed in 2018 with thanks to city council and chamber, we got started. This is a great project for us. It's a great fit. We, um, have lots of contacts with lots of artists, and we're making, it's a lot of fun. And eventually, we'll have these, um, geo-tagged and have a scavenger hunt, and people are so excited about it. So I have so many stories, but I don't know if we can take the time to tell as many as we want to. Um, other projects around the state, um, are done. You've heard of them. Um, Wimberley, Galveston, Seabrook, Pearland, but we have the most beautiful. We have herons. And we have a charitable component to it also. And that's something that we learned from clay cups. So, um, where we are right now, we got the initial funding of fourteen-five twenty-five and had money left over from that because we had concrete donated and we had polycoating donated. So that was a big benefit for us. And we also went with a cheaper plaque. So we had about $3,600 left over. Correct? Eleanor's working with me. Treasurer, yeah. Yes. So, um, the hot tax funding provided for round two, we had seventeen interested participants after we had a big reveal party, which DTAG hosted. That was not out of city funds. Just wanted to make sure you're clear on that. Um, we spotted that one out a little bit, but it was a great event. We had a close to a hundred people, and we had people signed up, and everyone excited about the herons. So with the 24,000 additional hot tax funds that you gave us, which is used for, to attract tourism to our town, um, we had, now, we will complete the seventeen in round three, and you, I feel like I'm gonna be, I feel like I'm bringing out the bride before the wedding event, and you're gonna see something that some of the owners haven't even seen of their own, of their own birds. So, you get a sneak peek.
If you're here, you're watching, uh, you can't look yet.
We try and, we try and, we go with the design. The owner picks out a design, and then we say, we'll see you when we're done, so that they don't get overly involved with the artist and let the artist get the work done. Um, so some owners, there's a couple here today that will see what their, um, design looks like. So, um, already gave them heads up. But with that money, um, and the donations that we get from the individuals and the businesses, we will still have money left over. And I had called Theo and said, I hate to set expectations for people for another round if the hot tax won't be available. And so that's why I'm here tonight, to, um, get your initial approval for the budget season coming up, that, um, getting additional $31,500. That would generate, with the money that we'll have left over on this project, we're not gonna get free concrete this time, but that was generously donated by Mainland Concrete, Larry Burks and his family, for the first five. So this time, we, well, anyway. So we'll still have money left over. So with this contribution, the next round of round three, we will have enough to do close to 26. And we have a lot of requests. So we, um, I brought up. We have, even for round three, we have seventeen committed individuals and businesses, and six other possibilities that I'm still trying to track down, and I'm still getting phone calls. So from the Historical Foundation, we had two people sign up. So, very exciting, and I can reveal those in just a minute. So let's get on with the beautiful artwork, and any questions that you have. Everyone knows where the first five is, but if, in case you don't know, um, I usually start with down at the boat dock. We have a bright and colorful one. I like to call it my melted box of crayons. Um, bright and colorful. Then we have one out front in front of City Hall, just south of the building. Then we have one in front of the education building, and then at Paul Hopkins Park. And last but not least, Ernie the Storyteller at the Historical Foundation building. Right? So, here we go. This is Jen Summarall. She was, um, she is a teacher at the Dickinson High School that worked with the students on Ernie the Storyteller, and she's painting one for her parents' home on the bayou. And it's, I've seen further pictures, and it's gonna, it's gonna be gorgeous. This is Jeannie Nelson. She, um, is from this area, grew up in Galveston, and she has two herons. This one will be at Bayou Realtors. Um, again, it's painting in progress. And, uh, by the way, we're painting down at Mainland Mall, and we have people coming in and out all the time, going, wow, where are these herons gonna be? Some people have seen them. Some people are excited. Um, and we got a donor out of it. So. He has a business in that area, and he, um, develops drones for NASA. So he's gonna donate one that's related to space, wherever we want to put it. So, um, she's also doing one for GCISD, or G, Water District. Yeah, that. This is Eleanor's, and it's gorgeous. It's finished. It's ready for polycoating. And, um, we, we're both painting herons, and we've learned a lot, and so has Jenna, our councilwoman. And we've learned a lot about, um, the time and effort that it takes to paint a 3D object. And, um, so I have a new appreciation for what work goes into these. This is another one that designed by Eleanor, and this will be at, um, the end of Country Club Drive for the owner of Four Seasons Boutique. No, this is your house.
This is my house.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. She lives in a historical home here in Dickinson. Yep. And Sue Baum, she teaches art lessons out of her home on Oleander, and she's painting this for Four Seasons Boutique at their, at their business. And, um, Mary Lou said, can, can, can you, she put high heels on that for my dress shop? She's all about the shoes. Um, this one is by Doug Heiser. It was sponsored by Public Management. Thank you. Um, they work with the city, and it is going to be in front of the VFW Hall. It has all branches of the service. The one, um, it's different from the one that you see in the center. The design at this, above this actual liberty is, he has all different, um, well, he has a helicopter, he has an airplane, he has a Navy ship, all the different, five branches of the service are represented on the top, along with emblems at the bottom. It's gonna be gorgeous. This one is for shell mark engineering. You see all the shells? And it's finished. It's ready for polycoating. And this one is for Bay Oil. And, um, if you've ever been in their office, they have a lot of, um, it looks like you're in a hunting lodge, and they went for an alligator, and it's gonna look like an alligator. It's like a... And this one, this beautiful one's gonna go in front of DHS. This is Councilwoman Jenna. And this is sponsored by Hewlett-Schollard. And so, this is what it's gonna look like. It looks even better, what she's working on. This is one I'm doing for Keith and Holly Lilly for their home. It's, um, one side's Marais. It's not finished. The other side is Dickinson Barbecue, on a bed of hot coals. This is the one that we're designing for our bayou home that I'm painting. This one is a designer artist out of Galveston. That will be for the Carney's Home. That's mosaics on the bottom, and it has flowers up above that you don't see right now, and a butterfly. It's just lovely. Um, Doug Heiser, this is one for Bill Schick and Galen Neiser on their bayou home. Gorgeous. It'll look very pretty when it's polycoated. This one's unfinished. So this is, you get into the stages of awkwardness when you see something that's not finished. So, um, this is an oak tree with different animals from the bayou represented, with some personal touches that the family requested, um, related to cancer survivorship. So, it's gonna be gorgeous, but that's the base coat, so you'll see a lot of additional designs. This one is for Gator's Bar and Grill, again, by Jenna Simpson. Thank you. And it, um, has one side firefighters, and the other side is a surprise. It's Gator's Bar and Grill. And last but not least, McCree Ford. Um, they have been out of town on vacations, and they are still trying to design theirs. So that's the seventeen. Um, so I, I know I'm gonna forget somebody here, but all these people have helped. And, um, you know, everyone on our art guild has helped also. I didn't individually name them. McCree Ford, polycoating, Mainland Concrete for the first five, Marais for hosting, um, the city of Dickinson, thank you, and M.I. Lewis for the use of their van. Bill Schick and Galen help deliver the herons, take their shuttle around wherever, wherever we need those herons delivered to. Public Management, Hewlett-Schollard for taking up two of our herons, and Mainland Center, Jerome Karim Properties for our paint space, for ten of the herons are getting painted there. And the Dickinson Art Guild for organizing this chaos. Any questions?
Was opening up to any questions?
Are there any questions? No, thank you for keeping on it.
Yeah, and, and I just wanted to let y'all know, they've been doing a wonderful job on our end of it. Um, I was wanting them to give an update because we are in the budget process, and if we are looking at, at, uh, at maybe funding the next set of them, to let y'all see kind of what has your first investment provided the community and, and, you know, and to kind of give you an idea of where it could go next from there. to kinda give you an idea of where it could go next from there.
So we can't really deliberate on it at this point, but well, when we get into the budget, we certainly, certainly will.
If you have any questions. And the next round, like I say, I have nine businesses, nine homeowners and six more interested. And anyway, it's gonna be exciting, so thank you.
Thank y'all so much for the update.
Councilman Brantley, you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, thank you all so much. This is an absolutely incredible project. You guys have done an amazing job. So it's just a, an awesome project. Thank you so much for all your effort.
Thank you, we appreciate it. We get a lot of positive feedback from citizens saying, this is a lot of fun, it's, you know, so thank you. We appreciate your support.
So just a few things, council, just wanted to keep you guys up to speed on just a couple of other things. One is obviously we are really getting into the budget season. So next week Harrison and I will be beginning our departmental requests and whittling those down. Actually, even as of today, Harrison and I are, we're discussing kinda what we think the revenue projections will be for the coming year. Things are looking, looking positive for us. Very eager to get into the budget workshops with all of you to talk about that. So just letting you know, we are gonna be finalizing those budget requests with full budget to present to you guys for workshops in August. Still based on our budget calendar as approved at the, at the last meeting. So we're going along pretty well there. Letting you know that the West Gum Bayou project is moving along swimmingly. As a council member Simpson had brought up is that, you know, they're doing quite a bit of work behind her home. But, and we'll be, and we're actually working on a, really moving out a lot of dirt in the near future. That's gonna, that's gonna serve as great detentions for that east side of town near the high school and Barber as well. As part of a, we are actually submitting our HMGP grant that would then extend the West Gum Bayou project further west. Down past California to continue those enhancements. As a reminder to council, the $15 million mod project that we're highlighting and, and working through the process of, 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 you know, designing out would be the Moore's Edition siphon project that would then allow us to improve Benson Bayou as well to help the conveyance of that water. So we have a ton of projects forthcoming. I would say by 2026, the city will have expended between local and state and federal funding. Somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, around 75 to 80 million dollars in flood mitigation projects when it's all said and done. And of course, that doesn't mean we're gonna stop, but that's kinda what we have allocated and what we have planned as of right now. Is there anything else to add? Nope, we go, okay, excellent, I don't have anything else.
You're done with your report? Are there any questions on that or anything else that came up? Councilman Wilson.
Where's all the dirt going?
Options, one is, so some of it is going to the, on school property. They did request for some of it. For the rest, we are looking, we're trying to find some, when we exhaust what we have at the school, we have some properties that might be available for elevation possibly if, if we can work with the EDC in the near future on that. So, so we do have some options because we're trying not to have a heavy trucking fee to take it all over the place.
Okay, cuz I was curious about. Someone who said that Lee City was bringing dirt down here for the water street project?
They are, yes. And that was already, that was pre-contracted before we had gotten the West Gum project off the ground.
All right. No other questions, so we'll move on to item six, public comments. Members of the public are invited to give comments at this time lasting not longer than three minutes. Comments may be general in nature or may address a specific agenda item and should be directed at the entire council, not individual members of council or staff. Any speaker making personal attacks or using vulgar or profane language shall forfeit his or her remaining time and shall be seated. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate. We have no general public comments this evening. We do have a few public comments on specific agenda items. So we will come back to that as those items come up. Next will be item seven, the consent agenda. Before I read the verbiage, I would like to note on item seven C, the blank, what should have been filled in, that's going to, to read Derrick Brown. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Derrick Brown for the community garden. All right, so the consent agenda. The following items are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion on these items unless a council member requests. In which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed after the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve by Councilman Wilson, a second by Councilman Decker. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That'll move us on to item eight. Item eight A, conduct a public hearing concerning a request for a specific use permit for a vacation rental in a conventional residential zoning district for approximately .379 acres located at 4517 Mariners' Mooring Street and legally described as abstract 155, page four. Part of lot 29 and all of lot 30, 29, 29-0 Mariners' Mooring subdivision. I will convene the public hearing at 7:56 PM. And our first item will be the staff presentation. We have a special presenter tonight, one of our interns is, is gonna handle this. Yvonne, if you would introduce your, your protege here.
Yes, so the only intern that we have that's brave enough to stand in front of you.
Okay.
Right here.
Not sure how to take that, but okay.
She has been serving as the planning and zoning intern for six to eight weeks now, is that about right? Couple of weeks left, but she's gonna present the, this first item for us. Can we get the screens, Anna?
All right, the floor is yours ma'am.
Well, first I would like, first I would like to say hello. Hello, everybody, hope you're having a good day today. So this property wishes to be a vacation rental and the conditions are outlined by the ordinance. But the code says that it's specifically subject to inspection at any time. And if no activity within nine, nine months, it will be considered abandoned. So these, these are just the regulations for fire safety. They have to have one smoke alarm and they have to have signage and they have to have hotel tax, hotel tax added to it. Now, if there is a possible change in ownership of this, there, there has to be within, notification within 30 days. And there is water access to the bayou because it lives in a cul-de-sac. And I think that's really good for visitors who want to visit Dickinson so they can really get, get to see what Dickinson is and how it affects the community and how beautiful our, our city really is. And the requirements for guests, they have two parking spaces for modifications and a copy of the requirements are set forth for specific uses. This right here is based on the number of rooms, parking spaces and neighborhoods input, conduct them, the maximum occupancy. There can be allowed five, five adults at a time and, yes, that's what we're proposing, I'm sorry. Name and contact info for local responsible party, uh, party scent owners within two, 200 feet of property done with the PH notice. Able to respond within 30 minutes, 30 minutes, I did that. Here's a map and this little part right here is where they are, where that little black one is. And it has bayou access and no resident renting the lease space is allowed on other properties except for this one. That, that is what we're proposing. And here's the parking plan, there's up to six vehicles could be parked here. And last is the proposed fire plan and here's the fire escape, meeting up all the standards. Thank you.
Would you be able to let the council know what the dispensation from the P and Z commission was?
On it, the consideration item, although, do y'all want that now?
Yeah, I just figured in the presentation, just to let them know what the, what the, the pleasure of the P and Z was.
So Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval unanimous. They did have a number of conditions that they wanted to apply. Do you want me to go all through, through all of those?
No, no, we'll do that later, just wanna let them know, just so on the front end, they know kinda where P and Z landed.
All right, thank you, appreciate it, well done. All right, the applicant's presentation is next, do we have the applicant here? And if so, would they like to say anything? If you would ma'am, when you get up here, please give your name and your address, so that may be a foregone conclusion, but go ahead.
Thank y'all for having me, Denise Ray and the address is 4517 Mariners' Mooring Street. And I had applied for a special use permit to be able to rent out my extra bedrooms. I will be living there permanently and so these would be guests of my home, just the wrong picture. Sorry. And basically, my plan is to extend it to medical professionals and other traveling professionals. When I went to the city and discussed what I needed, it came down to this specific use permit. But I'm not really gearing directly to vacationing, it's more for traveling professionals. That's, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have no public comments for this item. And so that means there's no applicant's rebuttal. And that will take us to adjourn the public hearing at 8:01 PM. And we will move on to item eight B, consideration and possible action on an ordinance concerning a request for a specific use permit for a vacation rental in a conventional residential zoning district for approximately .379 acres located at 4517 Mariners' Mooring Street. And legally described as abstract 155, page four, part of lot 29 and all of lot 30, 29-0 Mariners' Mooring subdivision.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion by Councilman Simpson to approve and a second by Councilman Brantley. Any discussion?
Whether any.
Councilwoman Decker.
Thank you, go ahead.
All right, Councilman Decker.
The neighbors, were they informed of this? I hadn't.
Were the legal notices sent out and all that, okay.
Yes, sir.
Any of them come back?
There were people who attended at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. There was nobody outwardly opposed to it, they were all here in support of the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Wilson.
Well, I have an opposition to this, I don't have an opposition to any of this, excuse me, any of this type of stuff that's put into a residential neighborhood. We had a similar situation down in Gumbayo that, and as a matter of fact, the city was brought information similar to what Galveston did. Which if you, to do something like this in a neighborhood, you had to get 75% of the residents that live there's, you know, approval to do this. This all sounds well-meaning and all, but you know, there have been problems with it. You do one of these, next thing you know, you got two, three of them there and everybody is not under the same conditions that the lady, this per, this particular lady is. So I'm opposed to these being put in residential neighborhoods.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a question for City Manager Malanson. Being that this is short-term rental, it, does a hot tax apply to this?
And that would be, that's one of the conditions of the S U P is they would have to file to, to pay hot taxes.
Do you have any other questions?
Question for the applicant.
Councilman Simpson.
Yeah, come on up if you don't mind.
So out of curiosity, you said you're not renting to vacationers, you're looking to rent to medical professionals that are traveling. So I take it you have a market for this or, or there's been a demand for people looking for this? Is there, is that my, a right to assume?
Um, there's several companies out there that target the traveling professional. There's a, a website that allows, it's similar to the Airbnb, but it's more for extended. One month would be the least amount of stay, but they gear more towards 90-day assignments for these professionals.
Okay, are you listing it on that site, are you listing it on Verbo or Airbnb or?
Through that, that other site that is called Furnished Finders. That's it, okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? I'll add, I think what Councilwoman Wilson said, well, I, I do think that it would behoove us to have a more comprehensive ordinance for these things. I know it's something kinda on the list, but there's a lot of other things we've got staff working on. But that, that aside, I don't have any personal issue with, with this, but anyway.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilwoman Wilson.
Actually, the information was given to Olson, Olson, back before we changed lawyers from David Olson to, and a matter of fact, I believe it was before our city manager got here. The information that was, or a copy of what Galveston did. And the comment was, was they wanna look at it and strengthen it or something like that. And of course, we changed lawyers, we, we got a city manager and so it got lost in the traffic.
Like something we can look at, I mean, I, I think that we can do, I mean, this is an S U P, so I mean, like, that doesn't preclude you from.
Correct.
Deciding what you wanna do today.
All right, any other questions or comments?
If the, if the motion included any of the conditions, it's just a flat approval. Yes?
My understanding is my motion would be for the recommendations as written. Do I need to amend my motion to include the?
So the ordinance is structured so that you're approving the recommendation with all the conditions?
Is that P and Z?
Yes, yes. And just as the council is aware, on these specific use permits, you're allowed to add additional conditions or remove some of those others. So the way it's set now, the only conditions are those recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So you're, you're good, you're good. Uh, Councilwoman Simpson.
I just wanna applaud the applicant for actually coming forward to the city, doing it the right way, getting the proper paperwork in order. I mean, I'm, I'm sure that people are aware or are not aware of the amount of people that already utilize Airbnb and Verbo in their homes without any sort of consent from the city. And so the fact that this applicant is willing to come forward, willing to go forward with some of the restrictions that we put in place and to contribute to the hot tax, I think that says a lot for them, so thank you.
Okay. I have one. Yeah, um, before the second reading, if staff could get with, Mr. Malanson, if you have staff, get with the owner. I think the current vacation rental ordinance limits the stay to 30 days. And based on the owner's statement, we may have to address that before we can finally approve.
Please address that now. So the reason why we went forward with applying for the specific use permit is that it allows the flexibility. So the definition on vacation rental is that it is 30 days or less. But if she goes for, you know, what she's talking about now with the medical market of 90 days, she's covered either way. So she can rent it for a day or she can rent it for the 90 days, the vacation rental lets her do it both ways.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll take this to a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
With Councilman Wilson and Councilman Decker voting no, the motion carries. We'll move on to item eight C, conduct a public hearing concerning a request for a specific use permit for a bar, event center and game room in a general commercial zoning district for approximately .244 acres located at 4200 42nd Street and legally described as abstract 78 Arholl Survey Track 1. Will convene the public hearing at 8:09 PM and we'll go to the staff presentation.
Hello, this property is located on the southeast corner of FM 517 Nichols Avenue and 42nd Street intersections. Kind of land, kind of in between them all, so it's got very good access onto 517 there. They did, the applicant did provide a floor plan. This includes an event center, bar and stage. It also includes like office, storage and restrooms. The site plans that were provided by the applicant are shown here. Unfortunately, the site plan is very difficult to read and it currently does not meet city requirements mainly on parking. And that completes the overview from staff.
All right, thank you. Uh, applicant presentation, do we have anyone here to present? Thank you, sir, if you would come up and please give us your name and your address before you start.
My name is George Harrison, my address is 4200 42nd Street, Dickinson, Texas. All right, we, we turning in some more paperwork? I don't know if she, she got it or not. No, it was a, it was a better drawing than that, you know, but we went back, we back and we measured. But we went back and we measured, we came to her and we got the exact specifics that you needed to have the parking lot. Because we got parking in the front, we got parking in the back. The last person that was there, they had the same problem about not, concerns about not having parking, so they put gravel out there in the back part, and they have the parking studs back there. And the front of the building is already marked off. It's been marked off with yellow paint. So I sent it to her in an email, so I don't know if she got it or not, brought it up here. Because we have better drawings than that because we went back over the parking lot.
We can't ask any questions at this point, but did you have anything else that you wanted to present?
I would like to say that this bar would be great for the city because it would give, bring revenue and be a great place for people to come out and enjoy themselves.
Okay. All right. We might have some questions for you later, once we get out of the public hearing, but...
All right, no problem.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, we'll move on to public comments. We do have one public comment signed up. Mike, are you? Okay. If you'd come up, just give us your name and your address, and then make your, make your comments, sir.
Yes, my name is Mike Subsivari. I'm the owner of the next door building. It's 4215 Nichols. The reason I'm here is they're already using the back parking lot, as they say. But the back parking lot is not theirs to use. I wish the city would ask all these people that want to open businesses in the single individual place to have their survey done before they can use it. I already finished the paperwork. I'm sure you guys already got it. Okay, the first page, if you look at the top, at the corner, left-hand side, is a 72522. At 10:27 PM, it's from CAD. Area 182518 is the area, is between my building and their building. If you look at the corner of that building, to their boundaries, it's about 2, 3 to 5 feet. Location of 182518 is, if the next page you look at is belong to the different people, that they did not pay their taxes since 1999.
I'm just going to pull up what he's looking at, so that y'all know what you're...
And this property is in court, if I'm not mistaken. If you look at, there's a court number on it. The court number for that property is 18TX0474.
Can you move the mic over? We're having a little trouble here.
Yes, this property is in court right now. Okay, if you look at it, it's an active judgment, 18TX0474. That's in Yawson County Tax Office. I don't know how you guys are going to permit somebody using a private property for their parking lot. It's not theirs to use. Who's going to be involved with the liability? The city's going to be liable for it because you guys issued a permit? Okay? I can walk through this city and get any permit. All I say, well, I'm owning this property. I want to put it to the parking lot. It's not theirs to use. Do they have a legal thing from the ownership? If the county cannot find the owner, how they cannot find the owner themselves? These people, they didn't pay taxes since 1999. The tax is more than value of the property itself. And now they're putting it, they want to put it as a parking lot. If you take that part away from that, guess what's going to happen? They have only seven space parking lot in the front, and that's it. Okay, seven space. I'm sure the bar, they need a manager. They need a bartender. They need a waitress. They need a place to put their trash can. Now they put a trash can in this property. They shouldn't. That's trespassing, as far as I know. How can you go put a trash can in somebody else's property without their permission? There's a problem with this building is parking lot. There is no parking lot for the bar and grill. I'm sorry. This only good for the insurance agency, the person come, take up the business, and leave. Bar and grill, when I walk to the bar, okay, I'm going to park my car. I go sit in the bar for two, three hours. After seven spaces full, minus the employees, minus the trash can, what are people going to park? End up being in my property, next door property, or in the neighborhood. Okay? People are going to get drunk. People are going to park from the people's yard. They have no other place to park. Who's going to pay for the mailbox when they get hit? Who's going to pay for damage to my property? How about if I have to remove people that park in my property? Who's going to be, pay for that? Am I involved? Do I have to pay for it? Or the city PD has to do it? Basically, if you issue this permit, telling people, yes, you guys can use, personal property belongs to somebody else's. It's not yours. This is CAD. That's the tax office. And he has a court number on it. I call it no man's land, but still, it's belong to somebody. And it's not belong to the bar. There is no parking lot. They used to try to put a church because of parking lot. They issued, they couldn't do it. You cannot issue a restaurant, or bar, or game room with a seven space. That's all I'm trying to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And the next item would be applicant's rebuttal. Would the applicant like to respond to any of the comments that were made?
You know, to my knowledge, I understand his concerns. To my knowledge, the property that is blocked off by the fence, and the property in the front and in the back, belongs to the guy that rented the property from. So, I mean, that was the first time I heard that. But I'm quite sure that it was been a bar for 30 years before it became a church. It was a bar before then, and I'm quite sure that people had a place of business there. It could be, it could be a store there. You still would have problems with different, with different things happening in the neighborhood. But I just don't see that, you know, everybody respects their people, that they would go and damage people's property, or people's mailbox, or do anything like that. You know what I'm saying? I mean, I just don't understand how it could have been a bar before. What kind of problems, they didn't have problems before? Just, you know, trying to make it a bar again.
All right, and we will adjourn the public hearing at 8:19 PM. And we'll move on to item 8D. Consideration and possible action on an ordinance concerning a request for a specific use permit for a bar, event center, and game room in a general commercial zoning district for approximately .244 acres, located at 4200 42nd Street, and legally described as abstract 78 R-Hall Survey Track 1. Do we have a motion?
After having a motion on the floor?
Motion. So either approval or disapproval. Hearing none, the motion dies, the item dies for lack of a motion. So it would be denied. All right. Moving on to item 8E. Conduct a public hearing concerning a request to amend the official zoning map for general commercial and conventional residential zoning districts to planned development zoning district for approximately 22.57 acres, located at 745 FM 646, and an unaddressed parcel generally located south of west FM 517 and west of FM 646, and legally described as 7.646 acres out of Bentwood at Bay Colony, Section 3, 2008, Abstract 19, Commercial Residential 5-0, 13.531 acres out of Abstract 19, Perry and Austin, Sur, Track 80, and 1.182 acres out of Abstract 19, Perry and Austin, Sur, Track 80-1. And we'll have the staff presentation and adjourn the public hearing, I'm sorry, convene the public hearing at 8:20 PM. Ms. Briscoe.
Good evening. So this property has frontage on both 517 and FM 646, and also adjacent to the bayou. The frontage on 517 is pretty narrow, and then they also are going to end up having frontage at Riverwood Drive and Connorford Drive intersection, which is actually part of this neighborhood. What they are proposing is commercial along FM 517, and then a three-story multifamily apartment complex with a maximum of 400 units. There will be a road extension of Bentwood Cove, which will add connection over to 646. And then south of that will be detention and a public park. This is a conceptual elevation provided by the applicant, and that completes staff's overview.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to the applicant presentation. I think we have somebody here this evening to present. If you would, please come up, give your name and your address.
Thank you. Brad Elmore, 6123 Valley Forge, Houston. Thanks, guys. Yes, as Yvonne mentioned, we're in the process of designing mixed-use development for this intersection. It's, I believe, the first multifamily that would be built in Dickinson in about 30 years, going back looking at the records. Class A, if you're familiar with the terminology, apartment. So nice finishes, stainless steel appliances, granite countertops. Really provide a high-quality housing for young professionals, and nurses, schoolteachers, other ways to kind of accommodate the residential aspect of the overall growth of the city. We also have a small retail component right there on 517. It's limited in the frontage that's available for retail. The engineering is not conducive for commercial development, really, along 646. But one of the interesting aspects of the project is to, our proposal to also include a public park along the bayou, which is a really nice amenity. We're excited to have it be part of the development, but also, you know, to the benefit of the community at large. So it's, for those who aren't as familiar with the west side of town, there it is again, on the southwest corner of 517 and 646. It's currently pretty heavy, heavily wooded on that eastern track. Now, this is actually an assemblage of two tracks. The western, northwestern parcel, seven acres, was historically a rice field. This is more heavily timbered on the eastern side. The park that we propose would abut the residences there on the eastern side of Bentwood Cove to try and preserve some of the aesthetic that they've enjoyed over the years with the heavy forest behind them. That's where we would, the nature of the park would be, you know, more natural within, and then with access to the bayou. They're kind of shown in the southeast corner of the, bottom right corner of this image. We'd also have the detention there. Our engineers say it should be large enough to facilitate a pretty large field, so it would need to be limited in improvements, but we could possibly put soccer goals or even some playground equipment in the detention pond facility. Another kind of interesting benefit that I've been learning about, working with the water district, is we'll, we'll actually have a looping water system that will connect to the existing infrastructure that provides additional water pressure for fire safety to the neighborhood, as well as actually makes the water taste better from, the term is nitrification, where it gets stagnant and dead-end, you know, lines, and algae grows inside it, and this prevents that from happening. So it was kind of an interesting benefit to the area in general. And then, as Yvonne mentioned, we'll actually extend Bentwood Cove to the, to 646, which will provide better access to, for, you know, fire and just general ingress and egress for the neighborhood. What we're told is, there's currently only one point of access, as you can see, to the left of that Valero for the whole neighborhood, which can be a safety hazard. And we're told, historically, the original developer lost this project in the recession before he could complete the road to the east. So that's one of the benefits of our development to the community at large. We'll have generous setbacks along the roads and the residential areas, especially with all the trees that'll be maintained there on the southeast side of the track. Again, going for a more natural feel on the park. And that is our presentation.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to public comments. We do have two people sign up for public comments on this item. One of them just stepped up out of the room, but I know we have another one here. Samantha?
Hello, everyone. My name is Luke Hughes. This is my wife, Samantha Hughes. We're at 901 Bentwood Cove in Bay Colony. We're not really here for debate. There's just a few points that I just wanted to raise that you could take into consideration before making a decision upon the item. So the first one for me is that it's currently a very quiet neighborhood. Everybody sort of knows everybody. It's a very nice place to live.
To add to that, we're at the very end of Bentwood Cove. The street ends at our house. And so the thought of extending that and opening it up to an apartment complex where it could be, you know, 400 to 800 cars, leads to another point of the traffic concern.
Yeah, and I think following from that, I think everybody in the neighborhood, their house values would be impacted negatively. And I think we're in a market at the moment where everybody's trying to keep values of everything considerably high and get as much as they can for property. I think second, one thing that we love about where we are, where we back directly onto the land that's going to be built on, is privacy is a big thing. It's just, it's a nice thing to know that you live in a private area where people can't see in. You can, you can see out, but the thought of me having somebody who could look right into my back door when I go out, morning, day, and night, is something that doesn't really sit well with me. We also have apartments across the street, Barheer Cove, and I struggle to understand the actual reason for having that many more housing apartments, regardless of what they are, in such a small area.
And as you mentioned, there has not been a new apartment complex in over 30 years, and I think there's a reason for that.
And I think also as well with Barheer Cove, and obviously you can't paint everything with one brush, is that there is a slight police presence in Barheer Cove, and not to say that there would be in the proposed item, but I think for myself, I wouldn't want anything being right on my doorstep, whether it be any form of police presence, because we, at some point, we'll be having a child, and I'd just enjoy the privacy of my own home, and I enjoy where we are. And I think it's a great place to raise a family, but I think the possibility of then extending the road out to 646 is something, again, having a small child at some point, it's going to be something that could possibly end up being, resulting in injury to somebody at some point. Anything else? But yeah, that's everything from us.
So, thank you. Please take that, those points into consideration before you approve this, you know, development.
Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Okay, we'll move on to the applicant's rebuttal. If, Mr. Elmore, if you have anything you'd like to say in response?
Yeah, I'm a parent of small children, so I certainly hear the concern there. One point of clarification that hopefully will be comforting is...
We just have to put it in presentation mode.
Oh, thank you. Is actually, the road we're proposing would not be shared with the apartments, so you won't have any traffic from the apartments, you know, using that road. It's really to the benefit of the community as a whole. As you can see here, there's no actual connection. The apartments would be accessed on 646. We tried to also move the buildings back as far as we could from the residences. This is, your home would be the one closest... This is, your home would be the one closest to any building, but as you can see, it's actually oriented east to west, so, and the access is on the western end of that, so you, you won't be living in a fishbowl would be my point there. So obviously, you know, the people who live next to trees want to keep the trees, the owner of the property would like to sell it, it's a, it's a family asset that they've waited for the right time to sell for a long time. We'd love to build a first-class project here.
All right, thank you. And with that, we'll adjourn the public hearing at eight thirty-one PM and we'll move on to item eight F. Consideration and possible action on an ordinance concerning a request to amend the official zoning map for general commercial and conventional residential zoning districts to plan development zoning for approximately twenty-two point five seven acres located at seven forty-five FM six forty-six and an unaddressed partial generally located south of west FM five seventeen and west of FM six forty-six and legally described as seven point six four six acres out of Bentwood at Bay Colony, section three, two thousand and eight, abstract nineteen, commercial rez five dash zero, thirteen point five three one acres out of abstract nineteen, Perry and Austin, sir, track eighty and one point one eight two acres out of abstract nineteen, Perry and Austin, sir, track eighty dash one. Is there a motion? Motion to approve by Councilman Wilson. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Councilman Simpson. Yvonne, did you have something to add?
Planning and zoning commission recommends approval with the changes that were included.
Okay.
The recommendations made that came out of the planning commission?
It's in there.
Okay.
The motion includes that.
Question from the developer. Do you mind? Could you put that picture back up, Yvonne, of the one you just had?
Sure.
That was in question? Yes, yes. Is this road extension, is this so that they'll be able to access the park?
The park access would be off of this road as currently con...
Since you have no intention of tying it to the existing road that's in Bentwood where these, this couple live?
Pardon me? Oh, no, it would connect all the way to the neighborhood.
Wouldn't be open into the neighborhood?
To the apartment.
To the apartment complex, I'm sorry. The neighbor, the plan was to provide an additional, you know, access point for the neighborhood as a whole.
If I can step in, because I...
Yeah, I'm getting confused.
No, no, what it is, is that road extension would actually tie into subdivision to six forty-six, but there's no access from the apartment complex directly onto that road extension. Let me, let me, you know, back up a little bit. As part of this PD process, developer came in. This road extension, I just want to be very clear to the council, Bentwood Cove ends in not a cul-de-sac. It actually stopped. It was supposed to be extended to six forty-six because the way that subdivision was allowed to be built out should have never happened. They should have never been allowed to have more than forty-three houses with one access out. What should have happened early on in the development back in the day was that the, both accesses to the subdivision should have been built first before, you know, a developer goes belly up. So you can see it was meant to be that Bentwood Cove to be the second access out. This is a major public safety issue for Bentwood subdivision to only have one access in, one access out, because if you have a fire and there's a wreck that happens right there, you are completely cut off from that subdivision completely. So what I did was I told the developer and Mr. Elmore was gracious enough to work with me a little bit, because there were actually two things that were supposed to happen with the Bentwood subdivision that never came to fruition for the entire, we're not talking about just the few people near, near this development, but for the entire subdivision, was that this, there were supposed to be two accesses in and out of this subdivision and that there was supposed to actually be a public park component as part of that subdivision in its original, you know. So what we are doing here, and I challenged the developer and he stepped up to the plate to say, I can actually provide some of the things that should have been built from the beginning. That was the original, you know, concept of this subdivision that ended up, because that developer went bankrupt, they didn't get to finish the development out. So, and so this is something that, that was going, that should have been designed and developed had the developer not gone bankrupt and that's why Bentwood Cove doesn't end in a cul-de-sac.
So, so also, so what you, what you just said was, was that the, the extension of the road is very beneficial to, actually to the Bentwood subdivision residents that live there and it's actually correcting an issue that should have never occurred?
I mean, today, there's, there's no way a subdivision, we would allow a subdivision to be developed the way Bentwood was, was developed because it only has one access in and out.
We did have someone to sign up. Bobby, you had gotten up when we were at the public comment part, so if you want to go and make your comment now. Good to see you again. I haven't seen you in a spell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm R.G. Reader. My address is eight oh five FM six forty-six, just down the road from this proposed project. I know that the item on the agenda here is strictly a zoning change, but you can't discuss that zoning change without having this discussion. So really I have two things I'd like to comment on and I know my time is limited, so I'll try to be brief. First, I've made this plea many times in this room, on many occasions, for many different reasons regarding trees. There's no doubt that this property will be clear-cut to accomplish this development. Now, I know that they have also, developer has graciously submitted a tree preservation plan that calls for the preservation of twenty-five percent, I think, of the trees, sixty percent of significant trees, and that's all wonderful. In reality, that's not going to happen. Once the property is cleared and filled for the purpose of building these buildings, whatever trees are left are going to die. That's just the facts. Now, the tree preservation plan is a wonderful thing, but what happens after the project is built and those trees that we did save begin to die? Is there some plan to enforce that later on, a year, a two, or three down the road? We know that those trees are have to, going to be replaced, going to have to be replaced initially, but can there be some sort of plan for that down the road? With that, I would also reiterate a plan that, or a proposal or an idea that I've said before, and that is simply that far too many pieces of property in this city have been clear-cut already. We need to do something to try to prevent that. I fully understand the process of development and what it means to take trees down, why we have to take trees down and everything associated with that. Counsel, it's up to you to figure out a way to help slow that process down. A good example, as you all know, would be the property directly across the street from this on six forty-six. They came forward and clear-cut the entire property. Two or so years later, came back with a plan to develop about forty percent of that property. That's still not done, still no plan for the remaining sixty percent. So again, I say, I know that it's inevitable that our trees are going to be cut down, but are we willing to constantly, with every project that comes forward, to give away the trees that make Dickinson what it is? Now, I know that we're all excited for this man to bring this development here. Certainly, it's the kind of thing we need, it's the kind of thing we want, but there has to be a way to be a compromise and it's up to you guys to try to figure that out somewhere or another. The other thing that I would like to comment about is the development itself. I'm well aware of House Bill twenty-three forty-nine that does not allow the city or any municipality to dictate, mandate the use of any specific building material, architectural design, any of that sort of thing. That bill is very specific. There are, however, some compromises that can be made within that bill. With no disrespect intended whatsoever, we had this discussion at a previous meeting. If you looked at the rendering of that building, there are no exits on it. These are all apartments that enter from a hallway. Well, that's great, I guess, but when I look at that rendering and those buildings, I sure don't see Dickinson. Unfortunately for me, I see nineteen sixty Chicago-style tenant rows. We don't need that. So how do you get around that and House Bill twenty-three forty-nine at the same time? It's difficult, but there is a way. There are some compromises to be made, but that takes a bunch of lawyers to do. The simple way is simply by mutual agreement. So how about we simply ask the man? Is it possible that you might look at a different design that more reflects the character, the charm, the history, whatever term you want to put on it, of the city of Dickinson other than a flat-front rowhouse? Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Mr. Elmore, if you'd like to respond to that, that probably should have really been during the public comment of the hearing, so I'll give you... Sorry, I'm on my mic and I'll give you the opportunity to respond if you'd like.
Again, understand the concerns and specifically on trees surviving the development process. It is a risk and especially with, with pine trees, which are, you know, the predominant type of tree on this track. I do think we'll have a little better luck in this instance because a lot, especially in terms of the aesthetic as it affects the Bentwood neighborhood, since we plan on leaving as many trees as possible there on the southern end of the track. You know, there are market forces that incentivize us to also have just as many trees, make it through the process as we can, because people like them. I mean, it helps us on the rent, it helps us fill the property up. We did work through some aesthetic changes per the recommendations of the planning and zoning committee. That's, this new rendering has a red brick facade that, working with Yvonne's team, we've, we've selected as, to try and match more of the architecture in town and specifically at, as we've seen, such as in this building itself. Changing the design is a little difficult at this point, frankly, to really rework these buildings, but we do try to include architectural elements to make it of interest and while also still being able to accomplish the primary goal, which, and I didn't touch on this yet, but these are one- and two-bedroom apartments only. These aren't long-term housing solutions. These are really for the younger professionals that are in transition, saving up their down payments to move into the neighborhood next door, or they're selling their home and they want to live, you know, in Dickinson and be close to their grandkids and have a nice place to live. So it's, that's really more the market that we'll be going for, are people who want the smaller, nicer-finished apartments than anything that's available here now.
What are the, what are you anticipating the rents would be?
They'll range, the smallest, you know, one-bedroom apartment would probably be thirteen to fourteen hundred dollars a month. The two-bedrooms, two thousand to twenty-two hundred.
Okay, thanks. I have a couple of comments. So I, I live in, in Bentwood, so I kind of lived there about ten years. My wife lived there, our sons lived there the whole time, so a couple of things, let's kind of pro and con this a little bit here, all right. Our neighborhood desperately needs another exit out. It is not safe. Before, we lived in this neighborhood, my wife and I lived in another neighborhood that was actually much, much larger than this one and only had one exit from the neighborhood from where we were. One day, while my wife was pregnant, we had to go to an appointment, there was a gas leak at an intersection and we could not get out of the neighborhood and there was no other exits. And I'll tell you, that is a significant concern. This neighborhood badly needs another exit and so I like that quite a bit. I also like that they're, they're putting in a park, A, for the tree preservation, also for the flooding part, but also having lived in that neighborhood for a long time, talking to residents, my wife served on the HOA briefly for a few years. A major, major complaint in the neighborhood with kids, with families, is that there is no, there are no parks, there are no amenities in the neighborhood at all because it is very small. And so one advantage I like about this is it's giving an amenity there, also one that the, the residents are not going to have to pay increased HOA fees for. That's badly, badly needed over there. Yeah, I commented on this to the city manager a while back. God, you know, I really hate that the, the trees, that, that goes there. I'm not, this is zoned rural residential currently, correct? Is that right, Yvonne?
It's actually split-zoned. It's partially general commercial and partially conventional residential.
Okay, so let's just have a little bit of like truth time here, right? It is, it is conceivably possible that someone will, these people are going to sell this land, they're going to sell it and it's already zoned. They're going to sell it to somebody that's not going to have to come for an S U P and they're going to cut down those trees and build something there. That's just the facts. So at least kind of to Mr. Reader's point, I think the goal here is you work with the developers to do what you can to preserve things. It's not really our active agenda item, so I can't comment on the tree ordinance in general, but I know at previous meetings where I was there, I made, I made comments and I made those to the city manager, expressing my frustration about what went on across the street, that there should be something, I believe, in ordinance to say you cannot, stage one, cannot be clear-cutting before your site plan. I mean, that is, that's not okay. So I also, and good to see you again, I'm glad you're participating, your local government. One of the people that spoke was a student of mine, so Luke over there, so good for you for coming to class. Is he gone? Did he leave? Oh, okay, he left. Well, tell him I said kudos for coming to a public meeting and speaking. Anyway, I do wonder, Mr. Elmore, is there any way that, we're talking about trees and other things like that, is there any way that maybe abutting the neighborhood, something could be done in terms of like foliage to create a little bit of a barrier there as far as privacy goes?
Yeah, I mean, the only house that won't be part of the park property is that northeast dome right there. We still have a pretty good setback and then, you know, there's the interior drive, but we, there's a lot of trees in there and any that can be preserved on the western side of the street.
As I would encourage you to the extent that you can to maybe work with the resident, this one in particular, and try to do that. As I'll kind of, I came to a planning and zoning meeting probably about ten years ago after we moved here and there was a gas state, when that gas station was built outside the neighborhood, and I don't live right up next to it, but I do remember thinking that, man, you know, that guy was living next to an empty lot and then he had a gas station, you know, back of a gas station right up his, on his fence line. And I, I do see that, so I mean, I feel like there would be, to the extent maybe you work with them to try to do something to create some kind of a buffer to the extent possible so that you still have a little privacy over there. I do, I do like that the road, I can't stress how much that's needed and that it isn't connecting through there so that the apartment's not going to be like speeding down that road, like through the subdivision. So I think that's important. The other thing I'll add is just about the nature of the project in general. I mean, we, we're going through the comprehensive planning process, for some of you that aren't a part of that, a big part of it is what they're telling us is that the tax base of the city as it is, it is not sustainable. We, we are too spread out, we cannot have only single-family neighborhoods, it just cannot be done. Your roads will not get fixed, we will not maintain things unless there is some densification in the city. And that's just from, I'm just telling you from a financial standpoint. I think aesthetically, we would all love to just have like sprawling subdivisions. I mean, I get that. I mean, I grew up like that, it's idyllic, but economically for the city budget, but also from the standpoint of just where, where things are in twenty twenty-two with, with living and homeownership, that is just not what, that's not where we're at, to where there is a need for these things. And one of the things identified on the comprehensive plan was we do not have any multifamily here that people would use. The multifamily we have is generally, not always, but generally rundown and poor shape. And, and I'm, I'm a little encouraged, I'm encouraged that what you're bringing is a little more of a higher-end, kind of mid-range, higher-end style of, style of apartment. So I can sort of say these things, living in the neighborhood too. So I mean, I think there are some pros and cons, but I do think from the city's financial standpoint, from aesthetic standpoint, from amenities for that neighborhood standpoint, I do, I feel like it does add to the, to the neighborhood ultimately, and so that's kind of where I, where I sit on it. But, but I'm all for, like, like Mr. Reader said, I mean, I do think, and you've been great, I know, talking to the city manager, that I feel good that we can get, we can talk with you throughout this and kind of work to, to, to address any issues that come up. So anyway, that's all, I'll jump off my soapbox. Other questions or comments?
Yep.
Go ahead, Mr. Decker.
No, go ahead.
I just have this gated access to emergency only. Is that police and fire and ambulance has that key?
Yes.
Yvonne saying yes.
Counsel Brandon.
Yep, I don't know if this is a question for Yvonne or Mr. Elmore, but can you educate me a little bit? What is the difference between a qualifying tree and a significant tree?
The difference is actually the caliper of the tree. I don't know the specifics. They start at ten-inch caliper, which is measured, I believe, a foot and a half above the ground and we're basically looking at how wide the tree is.
What's your experience, Mr. Elmore, in other locations as to the caliper? What's your experience, Mr. Elmore, in other locations as to the caliper or a qualifying tree versus a significant tree?
Well, we have, well, actually, just offhand, I don't know the exact difference between them. What I can say is there are a lot of big trees on this property. We'll try to do our best to save them, but everywhere we can, but we'll have a lot of good trees to choose from in hitting that ratio. That's why I was confident that we'll be able to maintain a pretty good aesthetic relative to where it is, simply from having walked the track, I don't know, eight or nine times at this point, just internally. There are a lot of trees that have been growing for a real long time there. So, you know, so four feet, five feet, big pines, you know, but there are risks on the development side. Obviously, we can't save any of them that are in the footprint of a building or a road, but we'll have lots of good trees to keep.
A large portion of the preservation you're going to find is going to be along your 25-foot setback on, say, the front side on 646. Also, on the back setback, that would be backing up to that one home on the north side of the extension, and a significant portion of it would also be in the, actually, the public park that they would be dedicating as well. So you're going to really see it kind of in that periphery and then in the park itself, which would be normally how you would get to those ratios of preservation.
Mr. Elmore, you're, sorry, I don't mean to make you keep hitting up. I am sympathetic to the Hughes's concern. You know, a home is a major investment, and I'm sure that they, when they bought the home, they didn't envision an apartment complex behind them, so I'm sympathetic to that. What is your, what is the plan setback next to their home?
It's 25 feet from is the actual setback, and then, but effectively, it'll be closer to 150, I think, just going off the top of my head, to the actual building. So the ring road will, you know, provide additional buffer, and then there's grass and lawn between the road and the actual building.
I did notice on your plan that it appeared like the road kind of went around the building, and I don't know if that was done to respect the current homeowners, but I did notice that. I'm going to echo Mayor Skipworth's comments. Would you be willing to meet with the Hughes and discuss the project and see if there was a compromise solution, maybe a larger fence in that area, or some foliage inside of that setback to kind of alleviate some of their concerns?
Definitely.
I looked up your specific answer. So a qualifying tree is a trunk diameter of at least eight inches and on the tree qualified list city of the city, and then it cannot be diseased, dying, or dead as determined by an urban forester. Significant tree is a diameter of 19 inches or greater, and basically the same requirements. So eight inches versus 19 inches.
Thank you. Mr. Elmore, if you'll sit down. Can you talk about, what class is this product?
Class A.
Okay. Can you just explain to us quickly what a class A product is versus alternatives?
Sure. This is, in the apartment development world, sorry, I got a fly in my...
He's been flying. I'm glad he went to you.
He's been over here too.
You really have class A, B, and C apartments, and just broad, you know, painting in broad strokes. The apartment complex to the northwest, Bahia Cove is probably C to B. The apartments over on the east side of 45 behind Boot Barn and everything are, they may be off that scale. Class A...
H minus.
No offense to anyone, but just trying to paint a picture here. Class A is really, that's top of the line, new apartments that have higher ceilings. You see nicer finishes within it, the granite countertops, the stainless steel appliances, a full washer and dryer for laundry, all of the modern amenities that you can think of in an apartment complex. Package services, you know, with all of the Amazon deliveries. You have your pool, your fitness center, all of those things that people want to have in a, in a modern apartment that, that you would see, you know, inside Houston or other cities.
Thank you.
Sit down, he's really after you. Okay. If you can't see from up here, that fly is all over him. I mean, I... Any other questions or comments? Yeah, I would, if you could, before we do the second reading, it would be good if you maybe speak with the residents that spoke, and we may be here an update by then. Because it would seem, if you're talking like really 125 feet or something, I would think there's some possibility to get some foliage or trees or stuff out there to create that, because that's quite a bit of space to insulate that. Okay. All right. If there's no other comments or questions, Councilman Simpson, you look like you do.
Yeah, just for, I guess, my clarity, voting on changing this, this is multifamily use. There's a way out of Benford Cove that does not go into the apartment complex and a public park.
Yeah, so that's why it's under PD and not just a straight multifamily zone change, is because you have the retail on the 517 frontage, that's a commercial use. You have the multifamily use, and you'd also have the public park, so you have multiple uses. That's why it's under the planned development status.
And I'm glad you brought that. One thing I'd like to add is that I know there's some kind of distressed properties out in that area, and I know there's some attempts to get a hold of those and put in something better. I love that neighborhood, but there's two things, there's two things I hate about it. There's not a lot of amenities right next to it. There's some stuff a little further, but, you know, right outside the neighborhood, there's almost nothing. The other one is, and I believe there was some discussion of the potential of even getting a light over there. If you live in the neighborhood, it is, you make a left-hand turn out of our neighborhood, just forget it. I mean, it, I mean, you live, what is it? It's like five minutes just to turn left out of there. A light is very badly needed out there, and if this helps us to spur that as well, that's a big improvement for the area, so. Yeah. And I know, I just wanted to throw that in, that that's another kind of thing that this may bring with it down the road as well. Okay. If there's no other questions or comments, take this to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That will move us on to item, let's see here, 10A. Consideration and possible action, approving an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Dickinson, amending Chapter 4 Animals of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Dickinson by adding a new Article 7 Community Cat Program that creates the Dickinson Community Cat Program to control community cat populations in the city and to address health and safety hazards and other impacts associated with the program. Move to approve. Motion to approve in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take this to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. There's been a request, and we will move item 10B to discussion in executive session, and then we'll come back out and consider if applicable. So we'll move on to item 11A, Executive Close Session, Texas Local Government Code, Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney, Discussion with Attorney Regarding Contemplated/Penning Litigation and Regarding Matters Protected by Attorney/Client Privilege. We will adjourn into executive session at 8:59 PM.
So we have item 12B.
Move to table.
There's been a motion, I'm sorry, 10B, excuse me. There's been a motion to table 10B by Councilman Simpson, a second by Councilman Brantley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item 12, we have no actual items from executive session, which will move us to item 13. Adjournment, motion adjourned by Councilman Wilson, second by Councilman Simpson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We adjourn at 10:33 PM.